If I could, I'd have everyone's attention please. As we have done the last few board meetings, we want to continue this. We'd like to have a word of prayer before the meeting begins. I've asked tonight Pastor Roger Hill from the Van Leeuwer Enterprise Baptist Church to be with us and to open up our meeting before a meeting with a word of prayers. Roger, if you would care.
Be very honored too. First, I want to thank you for the invitation to be a part of your meeting and lead prayer. At this time, we'll ask all to please bow with us and be remembrance God in prayer. Our eternal heavenly Father, again today, we humble our hearts in your divine holy presence. We want to obey you and what you teach us to do, to let us therefore come boldly unto the throne of grace, that we may obtain mercy and find grace to help in the time of need. Also, you teach us to cast all our care upon you, for you do surely care for us. We thank you for this gathering, for this board meeting session. We pray mighty God that you'd always be in their midst, always be in their meetings, always be in their thoughts and their endeavors as they attempt to do what's right. For all the students, for all the faculty, for all that's involved in our county. We thank you for leadership, we thank you for guidance. We well understand and know that our Savior, Jesus himself, would teach us that we can do nothing without him. The great can be everything we do when we honor Christ as our Savior, our hope, our Redeemer. We know we represent a lot of people in this prayer, and we know God, there's many people that need our help, need our support, not just for this meeting, not just for this session, but for every day of life that need the help of the good Lord in their life. Please, help all that's a part of our school system to look to you, to trust you, to lean upon you, and to truly understand and know that with Christ Jesus, all things are possible. We ask forgiveness where we fail, where we neglect, where we come short. We can always do better, and we pray this day that we acknowledge you in all of our ways, that you may direct our paths. Please be merciful to our people, guide and direct us all. Lord, we never want to pray without asking forgiveness for our faults, our failures, and our sins. Be merciful, we pray. We ask it all in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior, and amen.
Thank you, sir, for having me being with us today.
Thank you.
Any final orders?
To begin tonight, as also customary, we ask, as we all stand with the pledge of allegiance, and we have actually, we had a little confusion here. I had Addison Birch, who was one of the leading pledges, and her mom said she wasn't going to be here, but now she is. And also has Zoe Castle lead, so let's have Zoe, Anna, and the police come forward and lead us in the pledge. Come on in.
I will.
Please stand. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, both you girls.
Thank you, ladies.
For the mission, vision, and core values, I've asked Constance Martin, a member of the CMPS Projects News, WR Castle, and FPS Magic International Champion, to please state those statements and values for us.
The Johnson County School District Mission Statement is the ultimate educational experience for every child, every day. Our vision is to be an innovative school district focused on learning without boundaries. Our core values are integrity, leadership, commitment, and service.
Thank you.
Moving on down to student recognitions.
I would like to reverse this order today if I could. Last month, we began honoring our retirees for the current school year. Since that time, we've had two additional people, our family members, staff members, who have decided to take that plunge and make us all jealous and go into retirement. I would like to honor both of those members, people today, members of the Johnson County School System, they're both with us. So when I call your name, please come forward and accept a small token, a certificate, plus a small paperweight of an apple. First, with 21 years of service, working at Central Elementary and as a bus driver, Ms. Sharon Blanton. I'd like to say that other than my mom, Sharon taught me probably the vacuum place better than anybody in the building. She took me in when I was at Central Elementary as a student and guided me and was a big influence on my life, so thank you. I know you've influenced a whole lot of us, and you would be great to meet. Let's get a picture. Our other eagle tonight that we want to recognize was a teacher. I believe he started at Central Elementary, or at Oil Springs Elementary, Middle School, and most recently at Johnson High School, a vocational agriculture teacher, also a school bus driver, 29 years of service, Mr. Chuck Wetzel. That were my most memorable memories of Chuck. In 2006, we had an incident where I had a student who was at State Track Meet who was graduating, and we, Mr. Wetzel being a problem solver it is, he took his pilot license and he flew down, picked the student up, and got her back just in time for graduation. That's right. Well, thank you both. Let's get a picture of both of you behind the board. Thank you both again for your service, it would be great to meet you. Please join me giving them both a big round of applause. Also tonight, before we honor our students, I think that it's important that our students see that our staff are also honored, so I want to do the Golden Eagle Awards before the student recognitions. First, the certified recipient, and I'm just going to read this so I don't leave anything out. The certified recipient of the Golden Eagle Award started teaching in 1997. This person is the epitome of what it is to be a Johnson Central and Johnson County Eagle. She continued to go above and beyond her responsibilities, taking care of each child as her own. During her tenure, she has provided countless students with motivation and inspiration to pursue their goals. She has worked with students outside the standard curriculum, serving as a coach for the Johnson Central Academic Team, Johnson Future Problem Solving Team, as well as the Johnson Central Track Team. During her tenure, she has also worked with students with a variety of backgrounds and ability levels. She's even gone as far as opening her own door to her own house to help struggling students. This person has provided the venue for students to showcase their abilities, providing opportunities for students to compete in college art fairs, Cedar Coale Fair, and more recently, one of her students, Peyton Duncan, has received national recognition in Seattle, Washington. This lady, Ms. Debbie LaMaster, also helped to showcase student talents ranging from presenting them and displays outside her art room, as well as hosting midterm art shows. She strives to make sure that our school and district are always in the best light. On top of all that, she is the artist who makes sure that the finished product that she's receiving tonight looks as good as it does, the Golden Eagle Award. Words used to describe Ms. LaMaster are class act and phenomenal. This year, this month's certified employee, Golden Eagle Award winner is Ms. Debbie LaMaster. Ms. LaMaster was also honored last month as being a retiree, so she is retired, and to add on Chuck's story, the person that Chuck went and got, the two people, Debbie LaMaster and her daughter, too.
That was my very first flight.
Wasn't your last, though, right?
Not been the last.
Okay, stay right here and I'll get a picture of Chuck. Now for the classified employee. This classified recipient of the Golden Eagle Award has outlasted the last eight head principals of her school. She is always the first one at school and brightens every one day, every once a day by her daily kind words. She has a way of making students know that adults at this school truly care about kids. She gives of her own spring and fall break time to be available as food and milk trucks are unloaded. Outside of her job responsibilities, she is always quick to help with sewing projects, altering cheerleading uniforms, basketball uniforms, or even a dance costume. And over her 31-year career has helped sew, or helped sew, stage curtains. Beginning as a volunteer, she transported head start students in years before the district took on the responsibility to do so. Because of her willingness to pitch in wherever needed, her ability to make a difference in kids and coworkers' lives, and the loyalty she has shown to the students and staff of WR Castle, Ms. Helen Castle is a well-deserved recipient of the Golden Eagle Award. It's like Christmas, the only thing that's okay to fly is this and Christmas. All right, now let's get a picture of both of you behind the board. Much appreciated. Now, moving on to student recognitions, we have a huge group to recognize tonight. It's a wonderful problem that we have, have so many students, and a room full of reasons to celebrate. I'm going to turn it over. We'll begin, I guess, with Mr. Crumb at the high school, and I'll let you turn it over to your coaches. We have a whole group, every school in our district was blessed to represent us at international competition a couple weeks ago in La Crosse, Wisconsin, for community problem solving and future problem solving. While there, they received tons of accolades and tons of awards, so I'm going to turn it over first to Mr. Crumb, who can then turn it over to the coaches.
Okay. Well, I don't want to belabor the point, because I said most everybody's pretty aware of the accomplishments, but it was pretty amazing. I know a lot of people got to even watch it on Sunday morning as they streamed the award ceremony, but just to see all of Johnson County perform as well as we did from elementary, middle, and high was amazing. Just really proud of our high school students, from our individual competitors, internationals, to our FPS team, but then we also had a group go on to our Quick Recall, Quick Recall group go on to Florida and win down there, but I want to turn it over to our academic coaches, and you all decide who wants to talk about which ones, because I know different ones that we represented, different things, so just jump in and take over.
I will speak first. We'll start with FPS. We were in Wisconsin for, it seems like the 17th time. Wisconsin's been a popular spot. There were over 40 states represented, I think somewhere around 13 countries represented, 18 countries this one, a lot of them here mixed up. And we finished, the high school finished eighth overall, which is really amazing. They've worked very hard. I have Leah Flair, come out here, Leah. Leah comes straight from babysitting to be with us. Our other members are scattered out across various states at this point. I'm very proud of them. It is amazing what these young people can do. It is, well, I'm leaving too, so, we're leaving again. It's going to be hard to leave these kids, they're amazing. The thoughts and the processes that they go through to compete at this level consistently that we have, and so, congratulations to them. Mr. Enders is going to talk about our Quick Recall team as we went to Orlando and competed.
We took two different teams down to Orlando last weekend, or two weekends ago, I guess now, and the A-team went undefeated, beat teams from Texas and California on a path going undefeated. Now, unfortunately, because our regional down there in Orlando was so small, we ended up losing on some tiebreakers we had no control over, but we finished second in the nation behind a team that we actually scored more points than, but very, very good. The second team was consisted of almost exclusively freshmen, went 2-4, but lost two games by one question basically, and bodes very well for the future. Hopefully, we have, you know, state trophy next year. So, members that are here, Amelia Critzer was on the A-team, and Jenny Dides was on the A-team. Paula Clevenger and Hannah Skaggs were on the B-team. Okay, so, there's two for each. Again, just like the FPS team, our kids are scattered into the wind on various vacations and GSPs and things like that, so we'll see more of them later.
Also, while we were in Wisconsin, we had Peyton Duncan, again, who competed in Scenario, and her team, Scenario consisted of her and a couple of other team members writing together, each writing apart, make a story that's consistent, and her team placed first, but she also won Best Writer in the World out of all the ones that we could. We had MVP in Orlando.
We did. That was awesome. Cantrell, our captain for the A-team.
And then our CMPS, and Jerry Gibson's not here tonight, he's got a family emergency at Highlands with a family member who's about to pass. His CMPS, which was Chloe Desmond, finished fourth while in Wisconsin.
Mr. East, David, you want to introduce this school?
Sure. I just wanted to, before I allow Ms. Burton to talk a little bit about our teams, I just want to say to the board, thanks again for this opportunity, just a great opportunity to showcase our students, and we know that they made you all proud. We know it's a big experience, and we certainly appreciate it. And just speaking of experiences, I just want to brag on our kids just for a moment. The last couple of weeks of school, you know, there's a lot of fundings going on, testings could finish, and trips are planned and all this, and our students worked their tails off trying to raise a little bit of money that they could during the last couple of weeks, and even into the summer after school finished. So I just wanted to throw that out there, compliment them. Thanks to the kids, congratulations to our students, and just want to say thanks to our parents, but especially thanks to you guys for allowing us this opportunity. Ms. Burton.
All right. First of all, I want to talk about future problem solving, and I have Macy, would you come over here? Where's the rest of your team? Are you the only one here? Brooklyn, come up here with her. Brooklyn? You know, Hala, I have three of them here. We're a team. There are six of us. Come up here, all three of you, recruit. You know what, you have five that go to play basketball, but if you don't have somebody sitting on the bench when you've got those five and someone fouls out, you're really in trouble, aren't you? You really are. That sixth, number six person who's sitting in the seat sometimes, you know, feels like maybe I'm not as appreciated or as needed. So in front of everyone right now, I would like to humbly thank our two alternates, Brooklyn Orange and the Los Altos team, because they've been there all year, they've not necessarily been the ones who've gotten all the attention and all the glory, but they've been in every practice, and they've worked their rear ends off. And you know, at state, Brooklyn was on the team that was the alternate champion, and so she was in the first place team. A lot of that has to do with some luck, it has to do with the fact that Brooklyn's very talented, but also if she's not put with other people who know what they're doing, it's a struggle. And so Brooklyn was lucky, and I see she wasn't quite as lucky. She and Hala weren't stuck with people that were quite as competent as they were, and so it was a little bit more difficult for them to be able to be on the stage, but they did a wonderful job, and I thank them, because they don't receive a lot of glory and attention, and they work just as hard. Now, I want to talk about Macy. Macy, would you come up here? Macy's team's not here, I don't know where they are, do you know where they are? They're scattered across the world. Olivia Estep went in the room with her, Rebecca Spradlin, and Lika Daniels, and the four of them went in the room, they are the number one FPS team in America. So let's give them a hand for that. Number one in America. They are number two in the world, losing to a girl's school in Singapore that's ninth grader, so they're eighth graders, congratulations, number two in the world. Macy hasn't been recognized in front of you, but she was the individual, and you guys had the individual in high school, so you want to say something, Sarah? Because they weren't recognized here, because that happened after we brought them up here.
That is right, isn't it? I'd forgotten that. Sarah Thompson was also recognized.
So the middle school and the high school, and then almost killed WR's thunder, we're all right. But the middle school and the high school had the state champions in middle and high school individual competition, but both of those girls sacrificed individual glory for team glory, because Macy and Sarah could have gone in the room and probably written a book, but I believe would have won international, because I know Macy did it in fifth grade, so I'm sure she could have done it again, but instead, she was willing to play for the team, because that's the kind of kids we have. We have kids like Brooklyn and Hala who put the team first, and then we have Macy who puts the team first, so I wanted to recommend, I wanted to recognize, and I wanted to say great things about our future problem solving. Congratulations! Our CMPS team, you know, I don't know if you know what they've tried to do, but we understand that we really have a problem in eastern Kentucky with babies being born with NAS. You may not know this, but 64 out of 1,000 births in eastern Kentucky now is a baby born with neonatal abstinence syndrome, which means that baby is born addicted to drugs. So these kids are trying to do something about it, and they understand that if we can help the mothers while they're pregnant, then we can reduce the effects of NAS on the baby. So they've created an app, they have fed meals, because Macy's church is doing a wonderful work with Celebrate Recovery on Tuesday nights, if you want to go somewhere and be motivated. Freewill Baptist. I want to make sure I say it right, Freewill Baptist Church in Nines, and they allowed us to come and provide dinner there for a couple nights. They've collected diapers, they have formed partnerships with Community of Hope, with Serenity House. I had to tell you that they are the international champions in their division, but we just received our score sheets back, and out of all the middle schools, they are the number two middle school behind that same school in Singapore. They have a wonderful opportunity to go to Orlando with the high school Quick Recall team, so I've got some of my Quick Recall teams from Orlando, so y'all come up here and let's talk about you. Come here, Aldo, come on, come on, come on, Aldo, come on. Okay, you know they are the state champion Quick Recall team, but what you may not know is that they went against a team called Edmonton in the final rounds, and the decision was like two points. Well, with over 60 middle school teams competed in the national competition for Quiz Bowl at the four different locations. We ended up as the champions in Orlando, number two in the world, and here's why Edmonton got us, because we had a forfeit, because another team didn't show up. I believe that if we'd have played that match, we'd have gotten that point, that we would have been number one. So I want to tell you, this is our Quick Recall, the national champions in Orlando, number two in the nation. Just like the high school had the MVP, the middle school had the MVP, and it was Bryce Fletcher. In addition, we took three kids to camp last week, so this is my first week golfing in school that out. Would you three who went to camp come up here for a moment? And I want to make sure I say everybody's name, Gage too. But Maeve is in Panama City, Florida, okay? All three of the students that we took moved into the finals at camp last week. We took Maeve Tipton out of her comfort zone, as you know, she is the state champion in AH, but she's going to try to fill these two girls' shoes over here and pick up some language arts. So we, you know how you're really comfortable with something, and you take them, take it away from you and put you somewhere else, but we did that to Maeve. Maeve still made the finals. Jacob also made the finals, perfect scores in his class. There was only one student at camp who had perfect scores every day in all of his social studies classes, and he ended up as the camp champion, the KAC champion in social studies, Ben Moore. Just so I make sure you know who our Quick Recall players are, our Quick Recall players in the back, we have Drew Conley. Our captain, it's about Zoe Castle. Bryce Fletcher, MVP. Thank you, my buddy, I'm Roddy. Thank you.
Moving on now, our elementarys, as I said, all of our elementarys represented us at international. We'll start, we'll do ABC order, so we'll start with Central Elementary. Is Ms. Halsey here, Ms. Duncan, or you speak? Okay, Ms. Duncan.
Thank you. Our team consisted of Abby McKenzie, Alexis Howard, Gage Salyers, Landon Peach, and then the ones that are with us, we've got Bruce Kenny, Payne Hooper, and then our little sidekick Cameron Hand with us, too. So, okay. Our team, they, one day, one of our little girls came in and was really sad and said she had saw some people living under the bridge, and that's when Payne got the idea that that's what we should, that all of our effort should do. So, that being said, they started raising money, did a lot of fundraisers, and in the end, they bought an RV and we renovated it, lots of, thank all the parents, we had so much help to do that, and we gutted it, and we ended up putting four beds in, and we partnered with Encounter Missions, who is going to get the RV and going to use it for when it's severe weather or things like that, that people can come in there and stay, and also, they're partnering with a healthcare facility that is going to give immunizations and antibiotics and things like that for homeless. So during all that, though, they did several things, they did work the food kitchen, whatnot, and they, they made bags for homeless people and distributed them, they made blankets, they did all kinds of things for the homeless and raised a lot of money for it, so I'm real proud of them, they were an excellent group, wonderful to have down there. I want to take a moment to thank you guys, as a parent and as a coach, my child's been in this for years, and it's really been life-changing for her, and I thank you for the support. I was talking to a guy from San Diego there, actually at the ice cream place, and he came up to us and said, "How in the world does Kentucky do it?" And he recognized, he said, "How does your county do it?" And I got to tell him about how much support we have, and he said, "You would think, being where I'm from, we would have support," but they didn't have any, so we do thank you for that. And also, just real quick, I want to thank all the coaches, because I kind of went into this not knowing what I was doing, and everybody jumped in and helped me a bunch, and I appreciate all the coaches.
Move on now to the Flat Gap. Ms. Ferguson, you here? All right.
This year's been mini-first for Flag Gap Elementary. This was our first time competing at state for community problem solving, and we placed second, and then we went on to the internationals for the first time, and we got third place in the education division, so I'm very proud of what they've done this year, and the team members we have here are Ava Oberon, Abigail Ramey, Chloe Spradlin, Brady Ferguson, Nicholas Fox, Ross Ferguson, Maggie Glevins, and Dalila Back.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Moving on to Highland Elementary. Ms. Hall, are you back there?
I'm here.
All right, move on.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Cochran and the Johnson County Board of Education, because without all of you backing all of us, none of this would have been possible, and you all have given all of our students, not just Highland Elementary, but everybody, opportunities that cannot even be measured. They are life-changing experiences that you provided our children. I am going to start with our international CMPS individual I am going to start with our international CNPS individual champion, because she does have to lead. Emily Farther, will you step up? Our world champion, was an international champ, or world champion. So I applaud you, Emily, she worked very hard. I am going to start next with our SCIP team and their presentation of action plan. They were third in the world. That team consisted of Bethany Chapman. Step forward, guys. Oh, she's not here! Gage Conley. Jayden E. Stet. John Maynard is not here. Hannah Peadad. Kirsten C. Grace. And Sophia Spradlin. Clara Bolden and Zoe Curtis, because without them helping make all the props with the aluminum foil and construction paper and magazines, we would probably not have placed as well. Okay, next, I am going to announce the Foster Friend CNPS project. This project was born when a little girl from Highland Elementary was taken out of her school, or out of our school, and put into foster care. She left our school with nothing but the clothes on her back. She was given, I think, they said five minutes to go inside, get some things from her house. But our kids felt really sorry for her, and kids like her, so they decided to put together backpacks with enough items, toiletries, a pair of pajamas, a blanket, a stuffed animal, something to cuddle with at night, everything they would need for the first three days in their new home until the foster parents could go and get supplies for that, for that child. And their project has since gone on and been adopted by Portland Elementary in Jefferson County. We received requests from 19 different schools in Jefferson County, elementary schools that want to adopt our program as well in the upcoming school year. We also partnered with Gateway Christian Academy in Virginia Beach, and they helped us with our project. But this team, this is the world champion team, and I am going to announce their names. And that is Clara Bolden. Bethany Chapman is not here. Gage Conley. Jayden E. Stet. John Maynard. Kirsten C. Grace. Not only were they your world champion team, but a Beyond Your Award is presented to a team or student whose work epitomizes all the creative, futuristic, and passionate characteristics that can be observed through the project's impact and its potential for meeting the needs of the worldwide community, no matter where the community is. It's given to one team throughout all the junior, all the middle, and high school teams and individuals. It is given in FPSPI history, it's given to, it's been given to the state of Kentucky twice. Both times, it's been here in Johnson County. But this year, Foster Friends was selected for the Beyond Your Award. And I think that all of this proves, not just from what I have said tonight, but everything else you're going to hear and everything else you've already heard, and I've said it all year long, that we don't just educate students here in Johnson County. We create leaders for the future of Paintsville, for the future of Johnson County, for the future of Kentucky, and the whole world. And I applaud everybody here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Moving on to Porter, Ms. Butcher.
Oh, me? Okay. I want to thank the board for A, letting us on this amazing journey, and B, I want to thank my principal for putting up with us after school let out, and the children in the hallway. We came in third place in state. We had, both of our alternates did place, one came in first and one came in third. At IC, we came in the top 25 of the world, so I thought that was pretty cool. Yep, that's all that.
Moving on to WR Castle, you here?
I'll stand up for this thing. It's been a, it's been a great year at WR, and we've enjoyed the whole school, it's been a buzz about our project's news, and as it's known, the Bed Project. It's just been a fantastic year. We've got several of our students here, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Butcher, our, one of our coaches.
We have a lot of students that are not with us that are on vacation, and we do have these four girls, we have Lorela Arms, Haley Gibbs, Constance Martin, and Addison Burge. So proud of what this team accomplished this year. Started out as such a small project that we thought would maybe affect the lives of about a dozen of our students at WR Castle. Then we were fortunate enough to keep extending that, and we were able to touch the lives of all the kids at every school in Johnson County. And then we even were able to step outside of Johnson County, and a total of 103 children had their lives touched by Project Snews. So what these kids have witnessed throughout this project, I think will stick with them for a lifetime. So we're just super proud. They placed first at state and second at international, so. We also had two more. We had Constance Martin, who placed first, I think you recognized her at the beginning. She placed first in Magic, and Kayla McKenzie, who's not here, placed first in the International FPS.
Anita Kendra was at a meeting today, or yesterday, helped Anna, where'd she go? And there was this lady, I don't know, double doctor, I don't know, she had to tell you, and she said, "What is this about Johnson County and their problem solving?" And she wanted to know more about it. She was at the Fire Summit, and she saw all the projects, and she wants to try to get some money to help these projects. Anita Kendra can tell you more, but she was really excited, and she signaled for me to come in the office today, because she said all these projects are really, other people are hearing about them and reading about them and want to get involved. I just had to share that with you, that was just too cool.
From academics to projects that the students have done, on behalf of the board, we're all very proud of what you've all accomplished, and your representation of our school system throughout this country, this county, Commonwealth, and throughout the world. It's greatly appreciated. Hats off to all the administrators, teachers, everybody that makes this possible. I'd like to give thanks to the aunts, uncles, grandparents, and parents, that you give your undivided support to your children, to support them in these endeavors. And as it was mentioned by Ms. Butcher, these are lifelong learning situations that will be with them from now on, moving forward. So thank all of you for everything that you've contributed to, for the students and the school system. Thank you. Normally, at this time, we ask all students to come up and take pictures, there's such a crowd, and I don't know how we can get around everyone around the board. So I will give all the board members a copy of the picture that we took at the middle school a couple weeks ago, okay? As Mr. Hudson said, thanks to each of you, parents, guardians, coaches, teachers, administrators, and most of all, students for all that you do. Now, one thing I have to do, I owe somebody an apology. I was tore up when it first started here, it had a lot of different things going on, and I called Ms. Zoe Curtis, Ms. Zoe Castle. Ms. Zoe Castle's back here, but it wasn't, I didn't call you, you beat up yourself. Zoe Curtis, I apologize, wonderful job on doing the pledge. Thank you all, you're artist friends, or you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
I forgot to say their names, because I thought you were going to do something else.
Oh, okay.
No, so now we'll say their names.
Say their names.
Okay, community problem solving, Charles Davis, Leslie Jeffress, Hunter Burge. Not here. Where's Ava? Hey. Where's Nancy? Ava's good part way, where's Nancy? Chloe Dyer, and Brittany Dyer will help me. Oh, you're here, Jared Salyers, does anybody else? Great paint! Thank you.
Moving on now to WR Castle, you here?
It's been a, it's been a great year at WR, and we've enjoyed the whole school, it's been a buzz about our project's news, and as it's known, the Bed Project. It's just been a fantastic year. We've got several of our students here, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Butcher, our, one of our coaches.
We have a lot of students that are not with us that are on vacation, and we do have these four girls, we have Lorela Arms, Haley Gibbs, Constance Martin, and Addison Burge. So proud of what this team accomplished this year. Starting out as such a small project that we thought would maybe affect the lives of about a dozen of our students at WR Castle. Then we were fortunate enough to keep extending that, and we were able to touch the lives of all the kids at every school in Johnson County. And then we even were able to step outside of Johnson County, and a total of 103 children had their lives touched by Project Snews. So what these kids have witnessed throughout this project, I think will stick with them for a lifetime. So we're just super proud. They placed first at state and second at international, so. We also had two more. We had Constance Martin, who placed first, I think you recognized her at the beginning. She placed first in Magic, and Kayla McKenzie, who's not here, placed first in the International FPS.
Anita Kendra was at a meeting today, or yesterday, helped Anna, where'd she go? And there was this lady, I don't know, double doctor, I don't know, she had to tell you, and she said, "What is this about Johnson County and their problem solving?" And she wanted to know more about it. She was at the Fire Summit, and she saw all the projects, and she wants to try to get some money to help these projects. Anita Kendra can tell you more, but she was really excited, and she signaled for me to come in the office today, because she said all these projects are really, other people are hearing about them and reading about them and want to get involved. I just had to share that with you, that was just too cool.
From academics to projects that the students have done, on behalf of the board, we're all very proud of what you've all accomplished, and your representation of our school system throughout this country, this county, Commonwealth, and throughout the world. It's greatly appreciated. Hats off to all the administrators, teachers, everybody that makes this possible. I'd like to give thanks to the aunts, uncles, grandparents, and parents, that you give your undivided support to your children, to support them in these endeavors. And as it was mentioned by Ms. Butcher, these are lifelong learning situations that will be with them from now on, moving forward. So thank all of you for everything that you've contributed to, for the students and the school system. Thank you. Normally, at this time, we ask all students to come up and take pictures, there's such a crowd, and I don't know how we can get around everyone around the board. So I will give all the board members a copy of the picture that we took at the middle school a couple weeks ago, okay? As Mr. Hudson said, thanks to each of you, parents, guardians, coaches, teachers, administrators, and most of all, students for all that you do. Now, one thing I have to do, I owe somebody an apology. I was tore up when it first started here, it had a lot of different things going on, and I called Ms. Zoe Curtis, Ms. Zoe Castle. Ms. Zoe Castle's back here, but it wasn't, I didn't call you, you beat up yourself. Zoe Curtis, I apologize, wonderful job on doing the pledge. Thank you all, you're artist friends, or you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
I forgot to say their names, because I thought you were going to do something else.
Oh, okay.
No, so now we'll say their names.
Say their names.
Okay, community problem solving, Charles Davis, Leslie Jeffress, Hunter Burge. Not here. Where's Ava? Hey. Where's Nancy? Ava's good part way, where's Nancy? Chloe Dyer, and Brittany Dyer will help me. Oh, you're here, Jared Salyers, does anybody else? Great paint! Thank you. I got nothing. 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 Any opposed, motion carries. Six G, Ms. Vogel.
We ask the board to accept the bids from Flowers for Bikini and Jayden.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six H, Student Trips, Mr. Crumb.
Yeah, we have the FFA trip, uh, to, uh, the Hartsburg Leadership Training, uh, Annual Training July eighth to thirteenth, and then we have the State Fair in Louisville August sixteenth, seventeenth.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Oh, any, uh, second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six A, Mr. Burchett.
This is a standard student teaching agreement with Midway University, we sign it each year with the various universities.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? There'd be no call for vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six J, Ms. Rice.
Uh, Ms. Rice on number B here, we're asking you to approve the continued services between Johnson County Schools and Mountain Conference of Care.
Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, six K, Mr. Vogel.
We receive, uh, bill bids on the school buses. We ask the board to reject those bids, and we want to give you some options, uh, how to proceed. Uh, you can, we can list them on GoBills.com, or we can advertise that one later, or do a public auction here at the campus, we just need, it's no how to proceed.
Motion to reject them. Second? Motion. Motion made, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. I suggest that, uh, as far as disposing, uh, I don't have a problem with you that up for Mr. Cochran. I'd like to get a motion to, have Mr. Cochran to dispose of buses as he sees fit. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six L, Mr. Jeff Cochran.
I'd like for you to approve the renewal on the school missing program.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six M.
We're asking for approval, we give them out, conference carries for a memorandum of agreement for the sites program that's housed within our schools.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve? Second? Motion's made, the second, any discussion? There'd be no call for vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, six N, Shawna Pat.
And yes, we are asking, uh, to get to continue the use of Exact Path. Uh, you've seen some of the reports from Exact Path this year, and the growth that our students are making in reading, language arts, and math. Uh, it gives a pre-test, a middle, middle of the year test, and an end of the year test, and then all throughout the year, it has tutorials that go along with the path that the students are on. So we have had a large percentage of our students move from below, uh, grade level, on grade level, and then up to above grade level, so, uh, we really want to use it again this year.
Second? Motion made, second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Also, in your information, you have the Superintendent's Personnel Report, and at this time, on item eight, uh, I'd like to call to recess into executive session pursuant to KRS six one point eight one OB to discuss future acquisition of real property. Is there a motion made, second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
We'd like to make one brief announcement. Uh, we had in our board's yearly schedule, uh, August was scheduled to be a meeting at Porter Elementary, and we need to, uh, have, that used to be at the Board of Education in September, it's be at Porter, so just FYI, those will both be special call meetings just because of change of venue, uh, there'll be nothing special going on other than the change of locations, all that, so July meeting, just a reminder.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight.